All right, the time being nine o'clock, I'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Quorum present. All right, do any of the commissioners at this time have a reason to abstain for a financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
No.
No. All right, next item, item number four, approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passed. Next item on the agenda, item number five, public comment. I believe we had at least one signed up. Welcome, sir, come on up, state your name for the record.
Dale Nod, 44317, 303rd Street, Mission Hill, South Dakota. I concur with Ann and Phil Tow's talk on Tuesday that we are upset, you know, these permits are expired, they're still continuing to build on them, we need enforcement. I don't know what our next step is, but if we could start the moratorium, anything we can do to stop what they're doing because it's, like they said, if we were doing something wrong, we'd get picked up. This needs to stop, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Anybody else care to make a public comment? Going once, going twice, all right, I'll go ahead and close, public comment. Next item on the agenda, item number six, appoint Gary Vedder as Development Services Director and Zoning Administrator slash Commission Assistant. Commissioner Healy, you want to take this one?
My mic worked a little.
Yeah, that one hasn't been working. You guys are going to have to share, I guess.
There we go. Lost it. Yeah, I think we just needed to have a discussion and maybe officially appoint Mr. Vedder. It was, the duties are in his job description under the Director of Department Services. You know, I think we had plenty of discussions talking about Mr. Vedder is going to be the acting zoning administrator. I believe he's taken an oath as of now, we have insurance, liability insurance against him for those decisions and have from the beginning, so.
And we, as a commission, we authorized you to hire him as that as well, so it hasn't become in front of the boards.
Right, so it's, that was always the intent, that's what his duties have been. I think it was called the question, is he the, because the title is not zoning administrator, does he effectively have those duties? So I just wanted to address that, that he does, and that was the intent of the hiring process, and that was our discussions in the interview process, and so I guess we'll just take formal action, just to clear up any questions.
Any questions from anyone on the board? Any questions from the audience?
I think it was clearly our intention to do exactly what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Rob, do you see that as the right way to do that?
I think that's fine. I think it was done correctly before.
Yeah, is this necessary, I guess is the question I have.
And Joe, my thought is it isn't going to hurt. It won't hurt. I know we did change the title, zoning makes comments to authority and who's in charge, I don't think it hurts to put it in there, but it is in the description, I mean, you did it right, so.
Okay.
But taking care of it and having extra caution is a good idea.
Okay. I'll move approval of appointment of Gary Vedder as Development Services Director, acting as zoning administrator, Commission Assistant, Director of Acting to October 21, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Don?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes, motion passed. All right, next item on the agenda, item number seven, CAFO moratorium. Let's come to our attention that our zoning ordinance is potentially being challenged as not valid, possibly opening the door to really, potentially hundreds of CAFOs all over the county, you know, in all agricultural areas. Any of the other commissioners want to hop in on this, they sure can, so we're having a discussion on having a CAFO moratorium in order to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the community. And so, at this point, any of the commissioners want to speak on it, or should we go ahead and open it up for public comment?
Rob, my understanding is that moratorium on a CAFO at this stage is not legally permissible?
In my opinion, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, I do have that.
I think if our attorney and the attorneys representing the county through the insurance companies believe that it's not a legal act, we can't do it.
What do you recommend that we do, Rob, if our zoning ordinance is being challenged and it could possibly open up, you know, the people, the citizens, if you live in rural Yankton, you should be scared because tomorrow you could wake up with one of these 75 feet from your house if this, you know, ends up being true, so I guess.
Well, Ben, what's possible?
Turn the mic right down by you.
I think it's on, okay.
Hold for volume. That's not better.
It's worse.
That's better there.
Okay, sorry. Right now, my understanding is there's possibly a challenge to the amendments in 2006, and law provides for that if the amendments weren't done correctly, that would invalidate the amendments, and I know that's a long time, we're 13 years into the making of that, but the law provides if it wasn't done properly at the time, it does invalidate them all the way going back to 2006. My position today is we were not able to do a moratorium, and it's, we're calling it a moratorium, but there's an emergency zoning ordinance provision that's allowed. Right now, we do have zoning in place. If it was determined that it was invalid, it's going to take a period of time before it would occur, it has to get in front of a judge, judge has to make a determination. Today, our zoning is valid and enforceable. I know there is some concerns, or at least there's going to be a challenge being put forth, which does, is scary, right? I'm not saying it's not a scary provision, but at this time, my position is that we can't put emergency zoning measures, even though there could be an issue with the zoning in the future, I think until we hit that position, this is something we will have to address in the future. So possibly, I'm going to use the word possibly, under the emergency zoning, if our zoning is determined to be invalid, and I'm referencing the amendments, the 2006, I do believe 2003 was done correct, or the prior enactment was done correct, then that's the time I think we need to look at whether we should do some kind of emergency measure, and then my theory would be, it would have to be really particular, and it would have to be where those changes were in 2006. So I don't, my position would be, we can never put a moratorium and just shut them down completely, but possibly, we could with an emergency measure due to 13 years, we've been acting in that capacity this whole time, we're going to have a mess if it gets overturned because of the animal units issue and bringing it down further, so I do think that's something we need to address. I do know it'll take some time to get to that point, to see where it was, but I do feel that's something we should address closer in time when we know that that's a risk we could be running, and then we need to respond relatively quick. Under the emergency zoning measure, you would have to provide a 10-day notice and then have a hearing, so it's something we can't address today, even if you wanted to address it today, it's something we can't address, but it is something that I do believe we should consider in the future in this matter, so.
So are you, are you saying that we should do emergency zoning, set a hearing 10 days from now and enact it, or are you saying we shouldn't do that?
And I'm saying, let's wait and see what happens about any challenges that come to this.
But we have, I mean, we have this packet of, you know, how many, you know, challenging it, I guess, so shouldn't we be proactive?
My understanding, and I don't, I'm not aware of any legal challenge yet, I know that's what's being put forth, and I know there's some of those permits that are coming forth, contingent on type of thing. My position would be to wait a little while and let's see what happens. I know there's a 10-day window, but I think you would know far in advance of 10 days whether it's something we need to address, because it would be scheduled with a court, the court would listen to the evidence, there would be a ruling regarding the time and stuff like that, so.
Could you explain to the public, so if this ordinance from 2006 is thrown out, then the county can't regulate anything, is it, under 1,000 animal units are all permitted uses, correct? Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, just say it a little different. Any of the changes that were, the amendments that happened in 2006 would be null and void. They would be done, they would be done.
So there's no setbacks to 2,400-head barns at all? Am I correct in saying that? Nursery barns?
Whatever those amendments are, I'm just saying, all amendments that occurred in 2006 would be null and void. That's what would happen. So then, that's why my belief would be, again, under that temporary zoning, temporary zoning or this moratorium is set up more for no zoning, we didn't have zoning, or in my opinion, if your comprehensive plan didn't cover whatever came in, and I'm going to use wind towers, nuclear power plant, fish farm, something like that, where we didn't anticipate, and all of a sudden it's coming into town, and we don't know what to do, that's where I think that applies. In this situation, if our changes in 2006 are nullified, that makes sense to me that I would recommend at that time, probably a little more investigation to make sure I feel super comfortable, but I feel pretty good that I would make that recommendation, that any amendments that we had in 2006, that we look at putting in emergency, an emergency measure, trying to follow those provisions of that ordinance. But again, the ordinance is more for you didn't have it, you didn't address it, but we're going back 13 years, we're wiping out a big, we're having a big mess, and we're going to have a big mess for a period of time, so.
It seems to me that, you know, and you're the attorney, so we'll listen to you, but it seems like emergency ordinance would be a case for exactly this type of thing, if your zoning ordinance gets thrown out and you're not regulating something that has the potential to cause this much disruption, I mean, to me, that would be what emergency zoning ordinance is for.
And Dan, I'm agreeing with you on that, but when you read the ordinance, the ordinance doesn't say it exactly how we're talking through it. But in my opinion, it does make a good argument that that would make sense, it does, but when you're referencing the ordinance, it says you don't have a comprehensive plan, I mean, you didn't have zoning, those are things we have, but under the circumstances, I do think that it's something to consider, and something to look at, and something for the board to consider at the time, but I think we're jumping the gun just a little bit.
What about section 2005 of our zoning ordinance about an interim zoning ordinance? Have you, I don't know, I hate to throw this on you, you probably haven't reviewed that, would that be something more acceptable then?
Dan, I don't know that, but anything, if we're in, if the state law controls, so if we put anything in that's different than the state law, that's more restrictive, I mean, it's the state law that's going to control, and that references those amendments that occurred regarding appealing to the planning commission when the state law says it has to be a board adjustment, and that's an example, which we had something, but it wasn't proper.
So could you lay out a plan for us, then? You're saying we shouldn't do anything until the zoning ordinance is actually challenged? Is that what I'm hearing you?
Yeah, and that would be, that would be my thought, and my position would be, there's going to be significant, there'll be enough time to, for the commission to consider what's happening, where it's going on. My understanding is, I mean, the insurance company attorney, Doug Dibbert, you know, will be representing this, the county in that, because it's the ongoing lawsuits, and then we could seek some advice from him to see what he feels comfortable with regarding the validity of the 2006, and where he thinks our position is in that. I do feel we do have some issues, and there's some concerns with 2006, so I do think it's a worry, and I do think it's something we need to consider, and we need to entertain, and Dan, but I don't think, today, it's a good discussion, it's good we're bringing it up, it's good we're here talking about it, and I'm glad we're doing that, but I think we're just a little bit ahead of the eight ball here, so I think we should wait a little bit and see where the legal process goes. Sorry, Sherry.
No, you're good, for the audience, I'm going to read the law that he's referring to, it's 11-2-10, if you want to look it up for yourself, but the title of it is Temporary Zoning Controls Purpose Notice in Public Hearing Required: Duration of Controls and Renewal. So paragraph reads, and bear with me, I'll probably run out of breath. "If a county is conducting or in good faith intends to conduct studies within a reasonable time, or has held or is holding a hearing for the purpose of considering a comprehensive plan, the Board, in order to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, may adopt as emergency measures a temporary zoning ordinance and map, and a temporary subdivision ordinance, the purposes of which are to classify and regulate uses and rate related matters as constitutes the emergency. Before adoption or renewal of the emergency measure or measures, the Board shall hold at least one public hearing. Notice of the time and place of the hearing shall be given at least 10 days in advance by publication in a legal newspaper of the county. An emergency measure is limited to one year from the date it becomes effective and may be renewed for one year. In no case may such a measure be in effect for more than two years." So that's the law that Rob is referring to, and we have a comprehensive plan, we have zoning, so that is, that is the challenge that we face today, is we already have stuff for CAFOs, so this is in essence, Rob's point, is since that's in place, this law doesn't apply.
You know, I know that's the argument that's been put before us, but when I read through this, I don't, I don't see anything limiting saying, if you already have zoning, or if you've already come across this, that you can't, you know, impose this. If you have good faith and tends to conduct studies within a reasonable time, which we do.
Which we do, we have.
You know, that would be my argument, I guess.
And Joe, and here's my position, that's why I'm saying, I believe the intent of the article, like I said, say we had a nuclear power plant coming to town, and we didn't make the plan, but we have a comprehensive plan, but it doesn't address nuclear power plants, and we don't have, we have a zoning ordinance, but it doesn't address nuclear power plants, or we have, or wind farms are coming, and we don't address those things, and we didn't anticipate them, or cell power issues with, you know what I mean, something, then I think that's where that argument can come in, but I think today, my position would be, we already have in place the hogs, we already have in place the rules, it's not been challenged yet, we don't know the position of where the county is, so my, I strongly believe that the ability to put in those temporary controls, which we are calling a moratorium, it would be easily challenged, and my position, it wouldn't be upheld, we would lose that pretty simply, and I don't think there's any doubt on that.
Would.
There's other cases that even follow suit on that, but that's my position, but I do feel we have an avenue, and I feel, I'm going to use, I'll use the word good, I feel good, under this ordinance, that if our 2006 amendments get modified or changed or thrown out, right, and that's what would happen, they'd be thrown out, I do feel if we limited it to that and limited it to those things, then we could, then we would be safe, that's my opinion, Joe, so. Today, I just, today, we have a 10-day issue.
We could, so you're saying we could do a temporary notice if we give 10 days and limited it to what could potentially be thrown out of, so is that your recommendation? We should schedule a hearing from 10 days from now and put that contingent on that?
My thought is, let's see legally if somebody's challenging this. I know that's what they're saying, I get it, and I know we've done some checking and stuff, and there's a little concern going on, but I think until we get to that position, because then you have to, if you're going to schedule a hearing, you have to give 10 business days.
Sure, sure.
So I mean, we're going off just 10 days when we provide notices, well, the legal system has to provide 10 business days, which excludes the weekends and excludes the holiday, so that they would be so far in front of us anyhow that we would have time to respond relatively quick, right? I mean, 10 days is not quick, quick, but I mean, it's quick enough to respond before, and possibly, we got to think through it a little bit, but some kind of contingency plan in case it gets thrown out, and something where it's only in effect in case that gets kicked out, right? And there is a provision that allows, you know, our changes to be today, instead of the 20-day window when we have to wait out time, you know, we're.
Rob, it appears to me that our insurance carrier would have an opinion and a position on this. Is there any possibility that if we go against their opinion, our insurance could be invalidated?
Don, that's a risk, that's wrong.
And what is that, what is that, does that mean the county faces all?
And, and, and individually, individually, you're acting outside of opinions and legal advice, that you do run a risk, you do.
Has he weighed in, Don?
I don't want to ask.
Joe, sorry, I couldn't, because not, not yet, I did try to contact him and kind of talk through it, but I wasn't able to, so.
So if, what happens if the 2006 zoning is thrown out? I guess we'll go into hypotheticals here. Now, all these people that have come in and got conditional use permits, are those conditional use permits good, or are they not good at that point?
I did look at a couple of them yesterday to kind of see, I'm going to say, me, I believe how it's, how they were worded and how they are, were put in there, so they're contingent, the check hasn't cashed, and so the building permit request isn't complete. So I know there was concern with the date stamping and stuff, and my position would be, I believe that there would be an argument that they're not complete, because the checks are submitted, they're not cashed, and they're being held pending a decision, so I would believe the argument would be that the timeframe would be something into the future, not the time that they were submitted, because they're not completed yet on the building permit request today.
Well, yeah, those I understand, but say, you know, Mr. Remfer, who came and got a conditional use permit a couple months ago, does he have a conditional use permit if that's thrown out, or do we have to go back to 2006 and every conditional use permit we've issued for something similar? You know, I'm sure section, the 2006 zoning ordinance covered different things, but are all of those conditional use permits now invalid, going back to 2006?
Sorry, I'm going to have to probably look at that. I wouldn't think so, because there's the conditional use there, because the rules have changed, I wouldn't think so, it just gets kicked out, I don't know if there's a retroactive involvement in this, I don't know that, but I will look and we will talk about it, but I don't, I don't think so, and I don't think that's what happens, but I do think it's a mess, right? It's going to, it'll be a mess, if it gets overturned, we got a problem, so.
Is it, is it your opinion that if this 2006 change were to be challenged, it would affect only the changes in that 2006, or what about subsequent changes to the ordinance?
If they didn't have any bearing on any of the changes that occurred in 2006, so like it wasn't 2006, and then another change occurred on 2006, I feel confident if we had followed the rules, which I believe we did, that those changes are fine, so it's only 2006 is the concern, so anything subsequent, unless it was, I changed it, then I changed it again, which I don't think anything happened that way, so I don't have any concerns with anything that's happened since.
Because my concern is, I mean, CAFOs aside, is how many potential changes to the ordinance are we at risk in opening ourselves up for and have to review and? You know, my intent would be to, either through 11-2-10, or just simply our normal channels, adopt this as it stands today, I mean, this was approved by, by the people, it was not challenged at the time, and quite frankly, I think it's a little bit childish to come spend a bunch of money and try to find any, any small bit, grasp at straws to throw it out 13 years later, but, you know, 2006 would have been the time to refer it, but I guess the point is, we need to, we need to limit our exposure as much as we can, and I think that would be the intent, is.
And Joe, I agree 100%, that's why I'm saying.
So wait, wait until it's potentially challenged? Do we have to wait until a decision is made, or can we be proactive at that point?
My, my position would be, I think, my position, I'm going to look a little better, but I think we could be proactive, and my recommendation would be to be proactive. If we are concerned, my advice today would be, that's what we would pursue, we have an attorney that's handling our issues out of Sioux Falls, I will talk to, you know, we will talk to him as a commission, but to ensure he's believing the same thing and believing to pursue a same precautionary measure, if he believes we are in a very good position with 2006, then that'd be my position, and I would believe we would talk to him and see what he thinks too, as he's our representative for these matters.
Well, and Joe brings up a really good point, couldn't we just use that emergency and adopt what we have now as our zoning ordinance, 10 business days from now, because then really nothing has changed, and then that's being proactive? I mean, what would, what would the harm in doing that be? And then we have the rules.
And Dan, and I don't know if you could do that, and I would probably believe you could, that would be my position, but the other position I would take is, I mean, would it make sense to, if we believe there's a mistake, to fix the mistake and do it as we do amendments, zoning ordinances? Probably.
So.
I know there's a time, 60 days probably, you know, publications, commission meetings, planning commission meetings, so.
Well, the concern is what we had, is we don't know 100% if we go back to 2006 or not, I mean, there's been a lot of changes since, and if 2006 is thrown out, we think that the subsequent changes aren't thrown out, but we don't really know, is that an accurate, fair statement? We're not 100% sure, so if we do any other changes, potentially, they could, I mean, it's like spinning our wheels, we're not getting anywhere if they're all thrown out.
One of the counties, maybe you guys remember.
Cottington County?
Cottington County did their whole thing, and started over and shot it out there again.
Is that what you, is that the, I mean, I.
And I don't know if that's a recommendation, you're running a risk of appeals and referendums, and I mean, you are running risks by doing that. I don't, I don't have a problem with us considering fixing it, following the procedures for an amendment, and I think that's a thought, I don't think we should decide that today, you know what I mean, today, sitting here, I think let's talk, let's wait for there to be a challenge, or at least we'll talk to Mr. Dibbert and see kind of what he thinks regarding, I'm sure, I know he's aware of the challenge that's being addressed by opposing counsel, and so he would have an opinion on that too, guys, on what he thinks how to do it, but I do agree with fixing it and making it work, but I do feel comfortable that it's a good argument that we could stand underneath that zoning ordinance, the one that Sherry read, I feel that that would be something that addresses it, but a little bit of a stretch, I can't say it's not, but I do feel comfortable taking a shot at it to protect the county. I agree with that, I don't want a problem for the county, and I want us to take care of it, so.
What about this section 2005 I was telling you about, I don't, I don't know if you're, how familiar you are with that, but are you familiar with that one?
And my position would still be the same, I think if we are going to make any changes, and we're going to put in some controls and call it a moratorium, then we need to follow the procedure that the state law puts forth. So if our ordinance allows for something a little different, I would, I would believe that the right answer is following the state law. Because then that allows public input, it allows a 10-day window, it has constraints, I don't know if our provision in there, I'm not. constraints, I don't know if our provision in there, I, I, I'm not familiar with how it's worded, but my position is, we'd have to follow the law, the state law, the zoning ordinance.
So, you, your recommendation is to wait until it's challenged and then do, publish a ten day, ten business day meeting and then enact zoning ordinance?
And then, and what I'm gonna say is, to throw that out there, it's for, it's your decision, right, as a commission, but my position today would be that that's what to do and limit it to those changes in two thousand six, and if possible, make it contingent on, I mean, obviously, it'd be contingent on what would occur regarding the challenge on this, on the amendments in two thousand six, and, um, we, we would know more when the challenge is coming, and we would know what our position is, um, what the, Doug Dibbert would believe would be some concerns we would have, but my review of it, it, it's concerning, it, it's concerning, it might not have been done correctly. Whether it was, I don't know, that's cursory review and, and stuff too, so.
Well, if somebody comes in today for a permit for one of these, you know, what happens then? I mean, did, is, are we gonna give it to them, are we not gonna? Are we still following this?
We're, we're following our, our zoning ordinances in place and in force.
Okay, but if, if somebody comes in today and submits it and our zoning ordinance is thrown out, is that permit valid or, or not?
The ones I've reviewed, uh, my position is they were completed, put, completed application, so that would be what I believe today. I mean, maybe there's something I missed, but that would be my position today because the checks aren't cashed, they're contingent, into the future. I, I'm not sure if the null and void would be retroactive. I wouldn't think so, um, because everybody acted under, um, that, and it could've been challenged, and acted underneath two thousand six, and they didn't challenge them at the time, so they could be moving forward, and so that would be my position, it would be what would happen into the future, but that's something I gotta double check.
So, wouldn't, wouldn't it be advisable to enact something before the challenge? I mean, we could get, well, we got, how many?
What's if the challenge never occurs, Dan? What's if no one ever says, what happens if there's no legal challenge and, and, you know, I'm sorry, my answer is, my answer is if we believe there's, we should probably make some changes and fix it, even if there's no legal challenge, 'cause if there's concern that we have, 'cause we don't wanna be challenged in a year or two from now either. So, what I, what I'm saying is, I, I think we need to fix it if we believe there's an issue. We need to fix it.
Should we do it the way that Cottington County, I believe, when we were in Pierre, they printed their whole, every single document they had, and it cost the county forty, fifty thousand dollars, but, you know, at least they knew where they were.
And that's something to consider and think about. It, I don't know to that extreme, that, that's probably pretty extreme, but my answer would be yes, um, we need to look into it a little further, and yes, even if it's not legally challenged, and if we believe there's a concern, then I do want us to address it because we could have a problem five years from now. So, the answer is, when it's, it, the time doesn't solve anything. It doesn't, after ten years, everything's fine, 'cause that's not how it works in zoning.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, Gary, or?
I don't think so at this time, I, I said, I think we, we just have to, uh, go with the legal decision and, and, uh, try and move forward once, when the time comes, so.
So, your advice, um, perfectly clear is wait until we get challenged, and then we, then we'll, we could put something together? Is that, so I'm understanding?
Yeah, and my, and Dan, my, my thought process too is, is maybe be a little proactive on the zoning ordinance also too. I know, um, we're addressing, um, changes, I know we had a planning commission meeting last week to kinda make a plan on what to do. My, my position also is to proceed with that because I am concerned in two thousand six. It is concerning whether, we've done enough looking to see whether that's right or wrong. To me, it's concerning enough to proceed into the future and be proactive and start looking at maybe making those changes, making additional changes if the public wants something different. I think that needs to be addressed quickly, and I, and my answer is not to wait, and I know we had a planning commission meeting, um, which was a joint meeting with the county commissioners and the planning commission, um, my, my position is to proceed and keep, keep proceeding, and part of the review would be looking at these amendments and seeing if these are things that need to be addressed or at least implemented and added in part of the request for changes, 'cause the zoning ordinance, just like anything, is a document that needs to be reviewed and looked at and, and made sure it's addressing the public's needs and, and, and taking out as much ambiguity as possible, making it as streamlined, as convenient for, uh, Mr. Vedder to handle his and, and to help the public. So, it, my opinion, it's a living document that we need to address every so often anyhow, no matter what, because everything needs to be checked and ma- maintained properly.
So, y- your opinion is we can't vote on a moratorium? That's your opinion?
Correct, sorry, when I say, I mean, yes, sorry.
Okay. Well, that's good advice. Anybody have a question for the state's attorney on this item?
Any, any other questions from the, the board members?
No, I don't think so.
I just may, make a comment. Um, I know that, uh, Rob, the state's attorney's been really busy, the murder cases and everything going on. I'm glad he was here today, he hasn't been able to show up a few times before, and thank you for coming today, Rob. Uh, I counted in your, when you were up there at the podium, I think, uh, seven or eight times you said, uh, "Let's wait, let's wait, let's wait, let's wait, let's wait, let's wait." Um, "It could be a problem," heard that several times. "I don't know," I heard that several times, you can go back and run the tape back. Um, back on July the fifth, twenty seventeen, is when Don Kettering was the chairman and the CAFO issue started, because that's when the hogs were turned loose on Yankton County. We've had issues ever since, it seems like, it seems like almost every meeting, there's something about hog barns or whatever. Um, my dad had a saying years ago, and it said, "Weight broke the wagon down." That was a quote from my dad. Sometimes you have to act, whether it's right or wrong or indifferent, by just being complacent and doing nothing, sometimes makes things worse, maybe makes things better. But he also had another saying too, Dad did. "What do you wanna do, wait till hell freezes over?" Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had received, uh, two emails as well, I don't know if we wanna read those during public comment, or if you got.
If you wanna read them now, if they're on the moratorium, you can read them now if you'd like.
They were, um, which one's shorter? I'll read the shorter one, and you read the longer one.
That one's the longer one.
Okay, this one is, uh, from Ms. Ann Horton. She requested that this be read into the record, um, as a comment on the, on the topic. "As a longtime resident and taxpayer in Yankton County, I'm asking this commission to place an immediate moratorium on the construction of all CAFOs. It is quite evident from all the complaints and concerns that have been brought to the attention of this body that the current county, current zoning ordinances and county regulations are not working. We have at least two current examples of CAFOs being built without benefit of viable active building permits or conditional use permits happening right now. The law is not being followed, nor is it being enforced. Every person in this room knows what is happening in this county, and yet nothing but paper shuffling is happening. Either this county commission does not care to enforce the law, or perhaps there is some state regulation that stands in the way of their being able to enforce the law. At this point, it doesn't matter which it may be, because the bottom line is, we have illegal activity being performed in this county, and no one is stopping it, and no one is being held responsible for breaking the law. We are supposed to be a nation, state, county, township of laws. There's no point in having any laws if they go unenforced and there's no penalty. I'm an educated woman, I know the difference between right and wrong. When I make a mistake, it is my responsibility to correct that mistake. If I break the law, it is on me to take responsibility for breaking the law and face whatever consequences there may be. When you are a citizen of this country, isn't that part of your responsibility? Why are these people being allowed to continue breaking the law? Why is it that the county commission mails a letter telling them they are not in compliance with county regulations as their only response to their breaking the law? How is that acceptable to us, the taxpayers and voters of this county? Why isn't any serious action being taken? Why have these individuals not been arrested? Why isn't law enforcement on the properties ordering an immediate shutdown? Why is the process for dealing with all these harmful activities so weak and useless? A letter, a written complaint, a hearing, et cetera, is not protecting the citizens of this coun- county from what is happening. I demand real action. I demand the state's attorney and the sheriff to hand deliver a cease and desist notice to these lawbreakers. I demand that zoning staff oversees the deconstruction of these illegal buildings immediately. I demand that those breaking the law post bond in the amount necessary to return those properties to their rightful condition, and as a means of protecting any and all damage to the land, the water, the air, and the neighbors may be suffering as a result of their illegal activity. While many of you will disagree with my demands, I dare say that if you were living in my home with a CAFO about a mile north, another just east, another across the road to you, to the south, you'd demand the same thing. We are not breaking the law, and yet we are the ones paying the consequences for those who are. Therefore, it is imperative that this moratorium go into immediate effect so we can take the necessary steps to ensure our rules and regulations provide equal protection under the law to all those who reside in Yankton County. As it is quite clear, the current process, ordinance, rules, et cetera, are a complete failure for all of us."
This is from Phil Taugh. "Commissioner, I will not be able to attend the special meeting regarding the CAFO moratorium. Below is the text of a letter I would like read and submitted at this meeting. My name is Phil Taugh, and I reside along the Missouri River near Gayville. I am in full support of a moratorium of at least one year for all the, all further CAFO development for all animal types. The recent lawless behavior of all Yankton County hog producers is clear evidence that we have issues which must be resolved prior to continuing down this murky path. The zoning ordinance needs to be updated and clarified for all of us to clearly understand. Enforcement mechanisms need to be in place, and the first role of government needs to be restored, namely to protect the safety, health, and welfare of all of the citizens under its charge. A half dozen producers have taken it upon themselves to decide what is right and what is wrong. They were told, warned, and issued orders to stop building due to irregularities with building permits and conditional use permits. They have refused to acknowledge this and have thumbed their collective noses at the county and the other twenty thousand plus residents of Yankton County. Even now, they are attempting to throw out the current zoning ordinance and do whatever they want. They are community bullies and must be stopped, even at the cost of a new operator wanting to do legitimate business in the county. The current violators must be fined and, if necessary, prosecuted for their actions. A moratorium will ensure no further CAFOs are permitted until a resolution is found for our current situation. It will take work, hours of thoughts, compromises, and most of all, leadership to dig our way out of this hole. It will not be easy, and I am willing to help. We must create a new community, for we are a nation of laws, not one for those who value themselves greater than the law or the community. Let this moratorium be one of the steps towards that goal."
Any other discussion on this subject from anyone in the commission?
So, Rob, your, your advice again is we, we need to wait until the zoning ordinance is challenged before we do any emergency zoning, is that, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And it's your position that the county cannot legally enact a moratorium? Is that, is that correct? All right, is there a motion on this? All right, we'll move, move on, then. Next item on the agenda, item number eight, stop work order notices. All right, again, just like those letters, uh, have gone out, or, Rob, do you wanna, do you wanna take us through the, the process of what we should do? I, I know this, these have been going on since, I believe, June, uh, some of them, and where, where we're at, where we need to go, just so the public is aware?
What, what happens is if there is a complaint regarding, um, a zoning ordinance, it's covered under Article twenty-three, and it states in there, "Whenever a violation of an ordinance occurs or is alleged to have occurred, any person may file a complaint." And then, so that procedure's happened, my understanding, there's a number of complaints, I'm gonna guess, over thirty, at one time there was thirty.
How many do we have, is no offhand? Is it over thirty, in excess of thirty complaints, would you say? Okay, so at, at least thirty complaints, okay, have been filed, okay?
And, and then it says, "Such complaint stating fully the causes and basis thereof shall be filed with the zoning administrator," and I do believe most, if not, they've all occurred, that way, that's my understanding. "The zoning administrator shall record properly such complaint with the Board of Adjustment and investigate and take action thereon as provided by the ordinance." So, Dan, what has happened is, um, as we know, our prior zoning administrator took leave of absence, I believe, on February fifteenth, and then the county has struggled, uh, with finding a, um, individual entity, whatever you wanna say, to, to take over that position. So, when these complaints were coming in, the individual or the entity, I'll use the word entity if we're using District Three as the, the thing, the authority granted to the individual is the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator's the one to investigate, and the zoning administrator's the one to determine, it's the zoning administrator's determination of what to occur, what should happen. So, the first step in our ordinance, which is, which we have followed now, um, due to some delays in time, um, has occurred, and that process has occurred. And then what happens is, after that, then, it says, "If the zoning administrator shall find that any of the provisions of the ordinance are being violated," which happened, "then they shall notify in writing by certified mail to return receipt the person responsible such, for such violation." That occurred, we all, we sent it, under my advice, I wanted it served, and we sent it by certified mail, so there wasn't any issues. Most, if not all, of the allegations, um, the people that we believed were violating the zoning ordinance, were also notified through their attorney to ensure notice occurred at the proper time and it, and occurred within the time specified. It says, "Then the letter shall indicate the nature of the violation and ordering that the action necessary to correct it." Uh, I reviewed the letter, I believe that's what it stated in there, I do think Gary submitted a correct letter, I liked the letter, everything was done, I believe, correctly. And then it states, "The party responsible for the violation shall respond within seven working days from receipt of the letter, otherwise they will be considered a violation punishable under Section twenty-three oh three." So, again, the only person or entity who has authority under the zoning ordinance is the zoning administrator, which is what we've accomplished. The delay was account of not having a zoning administrator, it isn't the state's attorney's position, I'm not the one doing the investigation. If I did the investigation, I make myself a witness, and I cannot be the attorney because I'm a witness, I don't do investigations, the sheriff's office does, the police department does. In this case, the zoning administrator, um, I did recommend at the time that the planning commission, because we were delayed too long, and I thought our delay was way too long, so I made the request, um, to the commission that we have the planning commission do the investigation and get going on that. I also am the one who made the request that we appoint temporary zoning administrator to get something going on this. And then what happens, so then there's two options, and, and maybe there's more options, but the two options are, the matters can be appealed to the Board of Adjustment, with my understanding, everybody's appealed, 'cause they've responded, and I've taken that as an appeal. We're in the process now of scheduling the appeals, the appeals have to be, notice has to be provided, I believe, ten days in advance of the hearing, so that's the process of where they are. My understanding, the hearings will occur sometime the first part of December, and that's the due process. There's, all of our legal system is set up for due process of, it's, I make a complaint, Dan can respond, and then an independent board in your sails will determine what to do. Procedurally, then, what happens is, if the Board of Adjustment finds that there's still, there is a violation, and the zoning administrator made the right determination, then we get into penalties under the twenty-three oh three penalties. That is a fine, not to exceed two hundred dollars for each violation, imprisonment for a period not to exceed thirty days for each violation, or both, and. to exceed 30 days for each violation, or both, and an action for civil injunctive relief pursuant to Section 2108. And that is shutting them down, you know, and ceasing and desisting, and the court does have the ability to remove, you know, just like we had in Sioux Falls, that house that got removed in that historical district. Those are things that the court has to do. And procedurally, the county's following the right procedure, due process is being provided, and we're following through. For the complaints, it's too bad for time, but due to unforeseen circumstances, losing a zoning administrator for a long period of time, having to have a temporary to one day a week a zoning administrator. I know the zoning administrator didn't work one day a week. I mean, even when he was one day, it was more than one day, but I know the process was in place and was being followed, and the process is still in place and still being followed. So, procedurally, that's where we're at today.
From what I understand, they've appealed, but they're refusing to set a date because it was supposed to be in November and then first part of December, and now it's going to be after Christmas. So, what do we do in the instance where the people who are, you know, they're appealing to the board, but they refuse to come into the board? What do we do in that situation?
We had a conversation yesterday with Gary. My answer to the question is, we're going to start setting them, and we're not going to let them go into the future. They have to be set. So, my belief, I did, some dates were being set forth. It would be the early part of December.
Do we have dates set then for that year?
We're looking at, we're hoping to look at maybe at least getting one or two done to be set before us probably, and then there was a request made for December 18th, so we're just kind of waiting on responses.
Well, what do we do in that, you know, the meantime? The zoning administrator has sent letters saying, you're out of compliance, and they keep building and keep pushing the back date. You know, what do we do in that situation?
In my opinion, it's just to set the hearing date and get it set, and get it set. And then if it has to be continued, that to be addressed at the time, or if something needs to be taken care of by the commission, then it needs to be addressed at that time, and it'd be the Board of Adjustment.
Is there anything we can do for, do we allow the construction on these potentially, you know, that are out of compliance to continue in the meantime? What's your advice?
My advice is to follow the procedure, what's set forth in the ordinance.
Okay. So, you're saying the next step to do is to set the hearing dates with, is it 10 business days or 10?
I think it's just 10 working days. Legally, we handle 10 business days because it's under 11, but our ordinance doesn't provide that it has to be business days, so it's just 10 days.
So, we set the 10 days. So, what if we set the hearing and they don't show up? Then what?
Then we'll address it at that time, Dan. If we provide a notice and they had due process, then my position would be, the evidence that you would have, Gary would, does have some evidence in his office to review everything and still make a review, not treat it as a default, treat it as, we're having a hearing and follow a procedure, and if they don't want to present evidence, then that's their problem, not yours.
Okay. So, your recommendation for us, and just so everyone in the county is aware, set the hearing days. It comes to the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment makes the decision.
Yep. And my position, and I talked to Gary and Jessica yesterday, would be, we're going to set them. We're not going to sit back and just wait for them to set the time, and everybody agrees. So, December 4th was the date we were using last night.
Are there appeal rights on this hearing?
You could, yes. The answer is yes. They would have a right to go on to Circuit Court.
You could go on longer.
Yep. But then what? Just kind of said, really, what would happen is, you would have to bring the action, and we, me, the state's attorney, would have to be bringing the action in there, and so really, procedurally, that's really what would happen. So, if you get into the 2303 section, those are things that a court implements, and that's the procedure to follow, because let's say you put a cease and desist order anyhow, what authority does that really have? I mean, there's enough, the notice has been provided, the time has already started, it's been served, it's been return receipt, it's been given to the attorney, that things have happened, and there's been a delay, but the delay is, there's at least a 10-day window anyhow. So, procedurally, we're within.
Well, I guess I struggle with that monster block wall. We put a cease and desist on two days afterwards, but we haven't done that on either of these. I guess, why did we do it in that situation but not any of these?
It's same procedure, same procedure. You provided them notice that they're in violation and they're needing to respond, and the notice provision will start at that same time.
I guess my question.
Am I understanding too, Dan, if you didn't quit?
My question is, after you go through all this legal work and do everything according to oil, how are you going to enforce it? Are you going to go out there and tell them that they have to shut their operation down? They have to get rid of their building, destroy it, whatever? What are you going to do? Especially when you have a hog owner that has almost half of the CAFOs in Yankton County come in here and give us a Hitler salute? Do you think he's going to tear his CAFOs down? I think not. I don't know how you're going to enforce it. You can do all your paperwork all you want, and that's great.
Any other questions from anyone else on the board?
Can you provide some clarification to Article 19 and the appeals?
2303, oh, the appeal process? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so here, Board of Adjustment, Howard here, designed appeals, goes on to say, but then something I need clarification on, more in layman's terms, is, an appeal stays all proceedings in furtherance of the action appealed from unless the officer from whom the appeal is taken certifies to the Board of Adjustment that by reasons, facts, stated in certificate, a stay would, in their opinion, cause imminent peril to life of property. Can you break that down in layman's terms?
Sorry, Joe, I didn't. Listen, I'm sorry about that. That just means everything is put on hold.
Any enforcement action that we have requested is put on hold.
Yeah. Stays all proceedings in furtherance of the action appealed, so stay would be put on hold.
Because the argument is being made that even if we were to issue a cease and desist, that this statement says that with Nolan Boyd, that cease and desist.
That's what it's saying. That's what it's saying. It says everything is put on hold at the time, until the time. And then, too, procedurally, procedurally, so if the Board of Adjustment determines that the administrator made the correct decision, and you go to court, the court, even though legal proceedings takes time, right, and it takes time, the court can, in a very short window, right, and I'm not saying it's, my short window and yours is probably a little different because in the legal world, everything goes slow, but within a short period, and I'm going to say within 30 days or 15, you know, we have a 10-day window we have to provide, the court can listen to injunctive relief and put a restraining order determining a hearing in the future. Does that make sense? The court does have procedures in place knowing the slowness of the system. So, something could be shut down in a relatively quick period of time, once you initiate action in a relative, and I'm going to say 15 days, right? You can do it quicker, you can do it without hearings, too, but then you've got to have a hearing after you have your hearing, so everybody has their ability to be heard. But the process could be followed in a really sharp period of time.
Okay. Because the question, you know, we focused on 23 under the complaints, but under 17 duties of the zoning administrator, and this is, if the zoning administrator shall find that any of the provisions of this ordinance are being violated, they shall notify in writing the person responsible, which was done, indicating the nature of the violation, and ordering the action necessary to correct it. And then this is where, I guess I have concern, and others do, on why nothing to stop them has been done, but they shall order discontinuance of illegal use of land, buildings, or structures, removal of illegal buildings or structures, or of illegal additions, alterations, or structures, changes, goes on. So, I guess my question is, if that, if we followed that, and it was ordered, then would 1903?
And ordering is, they shall say that, and that's what was done in that letter. We said in the letter, that Gary's letter was, there is, he believes there's a violation on what he's reviewed so far in his investigation. So, we really are in there. That's where we are.
Right.
He doesn't have the authority to order as in order like a judge or a court system has to order, and that order is just to command and say, hey, you're done, and shut her down type of thing.
So, we can essentially, the administrator can order removal of a building, but really has no teeth until it goes to a circuit court judge.
To a judge, yep. And the judge, contrary to Gary's assertions, is, the court can enforce the building that happened in Sioux Falls. Think of the million-dollar house that got removed. I mean, that was in violation with a proper city historical, you know, requirement that they complied with, and then said, no, that was wrong, and then they made them tear it down. But so, those are things that can happen, and the court has the teeth and has the ability to find, to punish, to injunctive relief, to remove. The court has all those things. Whether the court would do that, I don't know, but that's up to the judge to make that determination.
Sure. Thanks, Rob.
So, when the board of, the appeal comes before the Board of Adjustment, what are the Board of Adjustment voting requirements? I know what they are in a condition, it's in variance. What are they in an appeal? So, on an appeal, it's four out of five members of the sitting board as well?
So, the answer, Dan, to that question is, Gary made a determination during his investigation, so to overturn, it has to be four out of five.
So, is your, what's your opinion on the stop work order notices? We can't do those either?
And I, really, no, 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 sorry. My position is that we're really doing it. We are following the procedure that the ordinance provided to us, and that's the procedure we're following, and we've told them that they need to stop because we believe they're in violation, and we're telling them that, what they need to do.
Okay. And your recommendation is to set the hearing dates today, get the notification days out, and if they decide to show up, they show up. If they don't, they don't.
And then my answer is, little legal way, little, little, but not a lot. I mean, we're not moving stuff past Christmas.
I think that's where it is. I mean, it's been moved several times, has it not?
Right now, we're still looking at between the 4th and the 18th, so not yet. It hasn't moved that.
And then, in my opinion, a reasonableness to it, but it needs to be established and done, and we need, and it's reasonable for us, too, right? We can't sit here and do nothing and be February 1st, and nothing's happened, you know, we're not doing that, but.
Do we post that they're in violation, similar to posting a building permit fee? Anybody aware of that?
I don't know.
Joe, I don't know. There's a post requirement on the violation, and maybe there is, but.
Rob, you mentioned a million-dollar home that they had to tear down because it was in violation. How many years from the start date to the stop date when they tore it down? How many years of litigation was it?
I don't know, Gary. You tell me.
I'm asking you.
I don't know. I don't know, Gary.
That's a pretty common answer.
Is it a common answer?
Does anybody from the audience have a question, the state's attorney or the commission on this subject? Yep, come on up. Just state your name, and you can answer. Welcome.
Doug Markwork, I just wanted, I hear things around town, and I'm here just to listen, and I want to make sure, or in my mind, I want to hear that people are, those people out there, everybody around town, or people around town saying they're in violation, the letters that were read into the minutes stating these people need to go down or what have you. And it's just like a appeal process for other situations, for the NFL, and those guys get to make a big hit, and they go two-week appeal, and they still get to play while their appeal process is going on, and that's the same, similar deal here, so everything is copacetic, and the laws are being followed, procedures are being followed, like you said.
Correct. I guess, and kind of, I mean, Doug makes a good point, because the point is, we have complaints, they have been investigated, but there's been no evidence presented, and we're having an independent board. So, due process-wise, we've got to follow the due process, and Doug does make a good comment. It's easy to make an allegation, and then we've got to make a finding and stuff, and that's why the ordinance is set up the way it is. It's why the statutes are set up the way they are. The procedure's in place, and there's a lot of safeguards.
I agree, and I think this is good. There's a lot of allegations going out in the community. It's good we had this meeting, so now everybody knows where we're at and what procedures we need to take to go forward and what's already been done. So, I think that was a good thing to get it out to the public. So, did you have something, Dan? Go ahead.
I just want to ask if it's also fair to say that should the allegations be determined to be frivolous or whatever, not accurate, potentially, there's liability that could be brought against the county. Question?
Dan, the answer is yes. If you are acting in a vicious, you know what I mean, if you're not listening to the evidence and determining based on the evidence that's presented in front of you, there could be individual liability, too, and liability for the county. Correct. So, I mean, the answer is if the hog permits are correct and they're in compliance, and the answer is we need to follow the rules and overturn Gary's decision if that's the case, so.
Agree. What happens on the other flip side of the coin? Somebody had letters and were out of compliance and now have a partially built or fully built building, then what do we do?
We're going to actually shut them down. Yep, then it's a court thing, Dan. That's the thing. That's honestly the only teeth you're going to have.
Plus a fine.
Plus a fine. And there's an injunction.
That's assuming that the, but the court could not do that either, right?
Do what?
The court doesn't have to find somebody, or doesn't have to make them tear it down, or doesn't have to.
Then the answer is, you could determine there's a violation, and the court could determine there isn't a violation. The answer is yes. Or you could determine there isn't a violation, there could be a writ of mandamus forcing an action, and could force that, and then the court could say, even though you determined there wasn't a violation, there could be citizens that do a writ of mandamus to force us to bring action, and then that itself could be determined to be a violation, too. So, either way, it could be determined that way, too, with or without the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah. And I think that these hog confinement have been getting negative press, but this is with anything. Somebody builds, you know, another structure that they shouldn't have and goes through that process. We treat everybody fairly, so, I mean, this isn't just hog barns. This would be other structures as well, would go through the same procedure.
And Dan, I want the rules to be followed. I'm the state's attorney. I don't, whatever violations we're doing, we have to follow them, and good or bad, to whatever citizens, I don't care who you are, the rules need to be followed, and that's what we've been following. That's how the prior administrator, I handled the prior administrator. I didn't care what we did. We had procedures in place, and that's how we followed them. On these complaints, I've not sat with Gary a little bit, but I do want a procedure in place. I want responses to happen within certain times. So, if a complaint comes in, I want a response, and I want a letter from the zoning administrator letting them know these responses are occurring and what's happening, so people are being informed. The bad thing with this is there has been a delay. The good thing is, then hopefully, we proceed properly or better in the future. So, even with the bad, there hopefully is going to be good, and I'm a big believer in when bad things happen, at least look at the good and try to make a plan. My answer is, if there's things that happen in the future, we need to be a little different and more with expediate, you know, responses, and at least get letters sent out, at least letting them know it's being investigated in time and stuff like that, so.
Any other questions from the board? And now, I will put on the agenda at every meeting, we'll keep updates on that, so the public knows where we're at from here on out. All right, thank you. Anybody else from the board? And your recommendation is we cannot do stop work orders, then, just to do the Board of Adjustment hearing? Is that correct?
My answers were following the procedure, Dan.
Next item on the agenda, item nine, public comment. Anybody care to make a public comment? What's that?
That was the last.
Anybody want to make a public comment, just raise your hand. All right, seeing and hearing none, I'll close public comment. All right, next item on the agenda, item number 10, entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation pursuant to South Dakota codified law, Section 1-25-2, sub-paragraph 3, and executive session pursuant to South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, sub-paragraph 1. Entertain a motion.
So, vote.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, now in executive session. Thank you. All right, entertain a motion to come back into regular session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, back into regular session. No actions will be taken as a result of executive session. Entertain a- Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, everybody.